We're calling the Lake Mills City Council meeting to order for September 7th, 2021. We have a real call.
Mrs. Bishop?
Here.
Ms. Quidnow?
Here.
Mr. Fields?
Here.
Ms. Curler?
Here.
Mr. Waters?
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. Everybody stand for the pledge of allegiance.
in public, one nation, under God, indivisible, evergreen, and justice for all.
All right, thank you. All right, we're to item four on the agenda already. Wow, we're flying. All right, this is the correction approval of city council minutes from work session of August 16th and the regular council minutes from August 17th. Was there any corrections on either one of those? All right, let's have a motion to cover both of those then.
I'll make a motion to approve the city council minutes from August 16th and the special meeting of August 17th.
I'll second.
All right, motion by Mrs. Curler, second by Mr. Fields. We have a real call.
Ms. Quidnow?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Ms. Curler?
Aye.
Mr. Waters?
Aye.
Mrs. Bishop?
Aye.
Motion passed 5-0.
Thank you. All right, so we're in the correspondence section of the meeting. Mrs. Curler, did you have any correspondence this last two weeks?
Yes, I did. I had some email correspondence regarding the community room use, which I forwarded to Steve Wilkie for follow-up, and I had some email and phone conversation with Tim Johnston regarding the Lake Mills EMS. And then I'd like to report out on the driveway throat and driveway width, if I may. I shared an update last time, and I guess I've kind of finished my evaluation of the situation. I met with staff a couple of times, including our attorney, city manager, and the planner, and we looked at the ordinance requirements for the driveway throat and driveway width at RightofWay, discussed how that might play out in implementing it around the city and what are some of the potential options. And based on my review, I think the ordinance requirements generally can be implemented uniformly across the city, so I think I'm not recommending an ordinance change based on my review of it. I think Mr. Tony's situation that he shared with us has some unique facts to it, where he's got the option to go to the Board of Appeals to present that to them, and I think that's the best recourse, so that's my recommendation for that issue.
All right, anything else?
Nope, that's it.
That was enough, but that was a lot of work, thank you. Mr. Fields?
I just had one correspondence also, the goofy classification for using this call here, the community center space. That was it.
Okay, I'm having trouble hearing you on the microphone.
Can I try that one more time?
Everybody else hearing him? Okay, go ahead.
I can barely hear him.
Turn up your microphone.
All right, I'll turn the volume up a little bit.
He's muted. Turn yours off.
Is that better?
There you go.
Sorry about that. No, I had the same email correspondence, looking for a Class B recognition to use the community center space here. That was all I had for communications. All right, I also had community center EMS, Milton Street, had some concerns, safety concerns about speed limits, which we're going to be taking a look at that from a staffing standpoint. And then also I got feedback from the state about the median out on the north side of town. I got that late today, so I'll forward that to everybody so you guys can see that response, and we can decide how we might want to move forward with that. All right, Ms. Quidnow?
I have nothing beyond what has already been discussed. Yes, I also had correspondence about EMS and the community center. I had an additional correspondence about the construction on East Lake Street and West Lake Street and how that is affecting the businesses there.
This moves us to questions and public comment. The public is encouraged to address the council at this time regarding items on the agenda. Your comments pertain to a public hearing, you are asked to hold your comments until the hearing. Public comments may be also be made at this time on items that are not on the agenda if you have registered with the city clerk before the meeting has been called to order. The state's open meeting laws discourage action by the council on items not listed on the agenda. Please keep your comments limited to three minutes and state your name and address when starting your comments, and fill out the sign-up sheet provided. For those attending online, please type your name and address in the chat feature. All right, so why don't I open up for a public comment here in the chamber? Anybody would like to make any comments? All right, anybody online wanting to make comments?
What public hearing for tonight?
I don't think we have a public hearing tonight, actually. I was just reading from my notes, I could have skipped that part.
Okay, this is Sherri Wagner with 403 O'Neill Street. I just had a quick comment then regarding the conditional use application for country campers. When you get to that, I guess my only note is along the sort of north property line where it abuts the residential area, is just continuing that landscape line through that property line. Right now it's kind of on each side of that property line on those two corners, and just since that one property line abuts residential and multifamily, I guess I'm just hoping for a little additional landscape added in there, a few more trees along that property line where there's a gap.
All right, any questions for Ms. Wagner? All right, thank you.
Thanks so much.
Item seven, city manager report. Mr. Wilkie?
I provided you with two items. One is the city manager's budget address, which goes along with the email that I sent you, and then the JRLIC priority letter that they sent to us and included in the packet. Are there any questions?
Mr. Pezzio?
Do you have a question?
I do. Just a couple of questions regarding the budget address. On page 10, there's a list of principles that were used to establish the budget, and I'm assuming that that carried over from maybe some past budgets. What is the process if this council would want to update those or add to those or revise those in any way? Is that something that we do during the next couple of months through the process?
Yes.
Okay. And then the other question I had, which is not really a budget question necessarily, but there's some language about manufacturing on page 26 of your address, and you shared this, have shared this with us previously, where we don't have shovel-ready properties, we've maybe missed some opportunities to get new industries in town. And one of the things that was running through my mind is I was wondering, what is the role of our Economic Development Committee in fostering or taking on any of that kind of work? Is that typically done through that committee, or is that done more at a staff level?
Most of it is done at the staff level. We generally ask the Economic Development Commission to review proposals and ideas and evaluate them for us, provide additional information, generally give us a "yeah, that's the way to go" or no. So historically, that's how we've done. The last time we met, we did go over some options, and we've been working on that as a staff, but there's been some roadblocks in the effort, so...
And I guess that was going to be my next question, was just what do you see as the barriers to, you know, us having more shovel-ready sites available for, to bring more industry into our community?
Real estate and infrastructure.
Okay, okay, thanks.
Is there any other questions? All right, seeing none. It's moved to item eight on the agenda. Councilmember's board report and acceptance of minutes from the plan commission of July 27th, 2021. Actually, I can accept those into the, into the minutes, so we'll just go ahead and move forward with that acceptance. Is there any questions on that? Yes.
Just a comment. I was in the city hall earlier today, and I asked Steve, what is Title X of the zoning code? Because that's listed as a future agenda item, and he and Dan indicated that's the old name, and now it should be called Chapter 660, so I just wanted to make sure we use the, because I was looking around in the code for Title X, and I couldn't find it. So that's an old name, I think, for the zoning code. So is that my, and Catherine, maybe you can clarify too, is that your understanding that the plan commission wants to look at the zoning code on a future agenda item?
Sure, but Title X, I don't know that reference, so I refer to the 660.
Okay, thanks.
Item A, discussed decision on purchase of council chambers' technology equipment from coronavirus state and local fiscal recovery funds. Is there a motion on that one at all? Misty, is there a motion on that?
Yes, there is. Do I can you read the title?
Yes, please.
City Council Motion 21-9-1-1: Approval of New Tech Switcher Upgrade for Council Chambers.
Can you give me the number on that resolution one more time? Sure, whether it's not showing up on mine. All right, we'll keep moving.
Would you like a motion?
Yes, please.
Okay, I move to adopt City Council Motion 21-9-1-1 regarding the approval of the new tech switcher upgrade for council chambers.
You're second?
I'll second.
The motion by Ms. Quidnow, second by Mr. Fields. Any discussion? Actually, why don't we get a recap from the staff on this first, and then we'll go into questions. Steve?
Yeah, this is mine. I'm really interested in making these meetings so that I don't have to have this on anymore. I also don't want to have to go through the problems that we're all having on a regular basis and be able to have a meeting where we can integrate both online with the people that are online and us, just using our microphone. This does qualify for coronavirus funds, and so if we want to make this upgrade at this point in time, we can use those funds to make this upgrade. It's one of the first ones I recommended right out of the box. I do think it's important for us to be able to hold quality meetings, and so I recommend that we approve this motion.
Just making sure that we cover all our bases, how many other quotes did we look at with regard to this technology upgrade?
We actually had four other quotes, but the system tie-ins, you know, that's why I went into the sole source information in the memo was, is that we already have a new tech switcher, and this is an upgrade into that, so not only do we get a trade-in, but it also actually matches all our existing equipment. So it doesn't require us to go out and add a bunch of other stuff off the side or try and make it work, which is generally where you run into most of your problems, and the technology is trying to match equipment.
I'm sorry, Steve, I have another, am I muted? No.
No, you're right.
Okay, I have a follow-up question to that. Knowing how technology can be difficult to, sometimes it's going to be intuitive because it's something that Dave has been working with, is, are we going to give Dave some time to get used to this equipment so that we can troubleshoot any problems? And if so, are we going to factor that into budgeting for this particular project, or is this just simply for the equipment?
No, there's training with this, but like I said, Dave already uses the equipment. The main item that would be the adjustment would be the, we're going to use Zoom for our off-site people, and that gets factored in, but we, Dave and I have already been through the training, and so it's just to get used to it. I imagine they'll give us some more training as we get into it further, but it's really pretty similar to what he's already using, and this is what Dave recommended if you want to ask him.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure. Thank you.
Any other questions? Yes, Ms. Curler.
Just a couple of follow-ups on that, I guess, Steve. Can you guys hear me? Just following up on what Ms. Quidnow asked you, is there, for example, is there a cost for the Zoom licenses? Is there any other computers or hardware or software that we need to make this whole thing work, and is that factored into this item?
No, we don't need any more equipment, and in fact, we'll need less. We won't need the headphones, we won't need, you won't absolutely have to have laptops with you to be able to tie it together. We currently pay a fee for eight by eight. We would drop that and move to Zoom, which, so it's almost a virtual watch.
Okay.
So from a, from a currently existing functioning point of view, that the only piece of equipment we need is the new caster, and then they're putting in new mics and cabling to upgrade to the more current mic systems that will work better with sound definition.
That sounds great. I don't think there's any one of us that would object to having fewer technology problems at our meetings. I guess one, I guess a general comment I'd like to make is I've noticed with our meetings and also looking at like Plan Commission or some of the other meetings, it's, people are not always being consistent in identifying themselves by their full name. Sometimes you can't see who's speaking, and I wonder if we need, I hate to necessarily have to go in a direction of a policy, but just some kind of a best practices for what's expected for your council members or commission members or whoever it is, so that when the public is participating, they know who the decision-makers are, and that they can see them and, you know, see their full names and know who's speaking, that kind of a thing. So I guess just a comment maybe for future reference, which, with whatever platform we're using.
Can I ask, can I ask Ms. Curler a question with regard to the last statement? The point you were making about having a policy or something to that effect, I just wanted to follow up and find out, are you saying that we create an ordinance of some kind to make it more official, or are we talking about just having a posting on the door or by the, by the computer, or how, what was your vision for that?
I guess the only thing I'm just kind of thinking out loud is the conduct of the meetings, you know, how we, how the meetings occur, you know, do we need to have a written policy, or can it just be communicated by the different committee chairs, what the expectation is for, making sure that your name is clearly listed, you know? So like at the Plan Commission, I think Steve Holman was listed as guest, and you couldn't see his face, so, you know, unless you knew him and knew his voice, somebody that's watching that wouldn't know who that was. So I'm not sure that that rises to the level of a policy, but I'm just thinking in terms of just how meetings are conducted.
Sure, and I know, I'm familiar with Zoom, and I believe that you, if you have a code, you know, that there's a, there's protocol that you need to fill in certain information in order, so by that regard, if we're using Zoom, it's going to be a really good way for us to streamline the process of making sure that nobody comes in as a guest. But I just wanted to make sure you weren't thinking like an ordinance or anything like that. Okay, cool.
We will not be Zooming. So we will be on the TV, and that's how we'll be projected. And so the nameplates will be there as well as Dave, a lot of times, puts up a name across the front of you, so that will not be an issue. Now, people who are Zooming in, it's going to be very difficult to make sure that they put in legitimate names. So from the standpoint of our staff and the consultants that are Zooming in, I don't think that'll be a problem, and we can make sure that that's on there. But from, from people participating in the meeting, that may, that may not be an option, but we will have eliminated that for the decision-makers, because you will be, as the old meetings were, they'll be on the cameras, they've got the nameplates in front of you, and when Dave needs to, he flips up the name on you.
So more like TV.
So the participants that would be online would still be visible on the screen, like what we have in the chambers now? Okay.
No, I don't, thank you.
Any other questions? All right, seeing none. Let's have a real call vote for Resolution 21-9-1-1.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Ms. Curler?
Aye.
Mr. Waters?
Aye.
Mrs. Bishop?
Aye.
Ms. Quidnow?
Aye.
Motion passed 5-0.
All right, thank you. Item V, Resolution 21-53. Misty, can you read the title?
City Council Resolution 21-53: Conditional Use Permit Declarations and Findings. SJS Land Holding LLC, property owner, 415 North CP Avenue, parcel 24607131243082.
All right, can I have a motion?
I move to adopt Resolution 21-53 on conditional use permit request from applicant Todd Oberg.
Second.
All right, motion by Mrs. Bishop, second by Ms. Quidnow. Is there any staff comment on this?
Brian Karanza is not online, so Brian, if you have anything you want to add?
Yeah, definitely, so just to council member Curler's point, I'm Brian Karanza, I'm part of the planning staff here for Meaden Hunt for the city of Lake Mills. Just to kind of highlight the memo that we did send over for you guys, essentially what's being requested here is conditional use for outdoor storage and then also for service of trailers on the site. There are a couple sort of key conditions and considerations for the site, principally being that that storage be on a impervious service that is provided on-site, and there's a site plan to address specifically the areas for that. And then also screening related to the outdoor storage use and the potential adjacent land uses, principally the residential uses in this case. And so I'll address any questions specifically to those, but those are kind of the key highlighted items that we wanted to take a look at. And then the other conditions are really related to the hours of operation, the storage, you know, and not having service be outside, but to have that contained within the property itself.
Brian, can I ask a question?
Yes, please.
If this were commercial, would they need screening?
Yes, they would need screening. I can pull up the exact ordinance, but I believe it's 66022, and any outdoor storage basically on a non-residential property would need screening. So I can try to find the specific language here, but yes...
Don't worry about it.
Yeah.
Is there any other comment from staff? All right, questions? Mrs. Curler.
I have a question for Brian. Brian, on the, in the planners' memo, and I'm sorry, I can't find the page where this is referenced, but I think the, there's a mention of that the comprehensive plan identifies the future desired use for this property as multifamily, did I read that right?
That's correct.
So how does, how does your evaluation work when you're evaluating something for, you know, a use that's consistent with the current zoning, but it's not consistent with the comprehensive plan? How, just for our education, can you...
Yes, certainly.
...understand how that works?
Yeah, so in this case, what's being proposed is, you know, there's no changes to the structure or anything on-site. It's essentially a change in use. And in this case, essentially that use does not kind of impede the future multifamily that is in the code. If it were to be a proposal of a reconstruction, substantially so, and then also to potentially put additional structures of that nature, there would be a consideration for changing the comprehensive plan classification, and that would be, that would come across the council's agenda as well. Does that answer your question?
It does, thank you.
That's consistent with what we did in some of the sites to the south. It was all recommended to go multifamily or, or some type of multi-use, and it continued to stay industrials, so there weren't substantial changes to the sites, so they just were allowed to continue the use.
Is there any other questions? Brian? I have a quick one. Ms. Wagner brought out the comment about screening on the north side of the property. What, what, how's that north side being addressed right now?
Yes, so there is existing fencing, as noted in the memo, it's six feet tall. When I went out and did the site visit, I walked around the various adjacent properties to try to get a sense of if a trailer were to be parked where the proposed trailers would be parked, you know, where are the critical sightlines and where, where screening would be appropriate. I found that because there's no existing structure or use on kind of the, I guess you would call it a vacant lot right there, and at the sightlines from the structure itself, as it currently stands, I thought the slating would be sufficient kind of in that middle section. At the corners where there is established uses, that's where the screening of landscaping would be more, more important, just based on the elevation of the sites, you would likely see campers. I do want to just note, we're not... I do want to just note, we're not looking to entirely screen every inch of every camper, but rather to try to mitigate kind of the overall arching outdoor use, the visibility of that and break up those lines.
All right, thank you. Also, I'd like to note that Mr. Oberg is in the chamber tonight, so if the council has any questions for him, we could suspend the rules as well. So, any other questions? I did see the, the Planning Commission meeting that addressed this last week and they went into great detail on this item, it was well over an hour, so it was a long meeting on this topic, but it seems like they covered the topic very well, so thank you to them. There's no other questions? I move to a roll call.
I was just going to move that we suspend the rules to allow Mr. Oberg to speak just so he can share with us their purpose of his project since he's taking the time to be here tonight.
Motion on the floor?
Second.
Just blanking there. So motion by Ms. Kurler, second by Ms. Quidnall, show of hands? All right, so moved. Ms. Oberg, would you have any comments for us?
Just to be clear, you know, this process started June, I'm still not at the finish line, all I'm looking to do is purchase some property. My service organization right now is largely in an abandoned factory at 233 Tyroleanina Road. That factory is really unsafe and I do not want to have my team working there over the winter. There's just some challenges without facility, so the goal is to simply move it over to this operation. I'm a little concerned about some of the long-term plans here and I'm not sure how difficult it is if I ever did want to do some additions to that property, so that is a concern that I have. I've yet to purchase the property, the seller is here as well. There's been an additional expense added of about $40,000 already just to get the property to the code. I think I'm being told as well that should I ever want a building permit, that this lot is the only lot in this industrial park with a fence. It was built, the fence, to code at the time, but that code has changed. If I want a building permit, I now have an additional $50,000 to $60,000 to move that fence. The fence was appraised by the fencing company that put it in and they feel that it won't move very easily, it would just need to be replaced because of its age. So all of these things are starting to, to make this a challenging project for me, you know, so it's one of those things I'll have to just continue to assess. I do have a lot of concerns and the process, not being a developer, was a little bit of a surprise to me, so I volunteered with the chamber. If there's something I can do to help other businesses step through this process, understand what they need to get started, who they need to engage, not to guide them or steer them or counsel them, but here are the things you need to do, so there are no surprises, so you can be prepared, so everything can be in order to, to help things flow a little smoother. Obviously, I got some surprises along the way, a $2,300 bill that wasn't really communicated to me was, was heading my way, but we'll, we'll deal with that and we'll take care of that as well. And, you know, my business has been here almost 30 years, I've had it for seven and a half, and I was just wondering if, you know, if there's other ways to maybe help a business owner who's wanting to invest and grow his business in a community do this in maybe a little bit more streamlined manner. Though I'm not, I'm not advocating bypassing codes or bypassing due process, but maybe there's a way to condense the, the timing of something like this, because even making this purchase, there's all kinds of things that have to be done, you know, in conjunction with moving my team and get everything the way we want it to do. So when all said and done, it's probably going to be about a six-month, you know, event. I'm not building anything, I'm not adding onto the building initially, we're just wanting to move our business that's been here for almost 30 years to a different location. And what's interesting to me too, and I know there's grandfather rules, but there's a seven days a week, 24 hours a day operation right across the street from me, running trucks and semis through there 24 hours a day, and I get it, we're, we're the new guy purchasing the property, so we'll, we'll, we'll strike that fine balance and, and look to do what we got to do to get that scored away, but I just, when we look at the bigger picture, I mean, there's also a building that changed hands right next to me in the form of storage garages, and yet I don't see privacy fencing down there. So it's just, it's just interesting, some of the dynamics here that I face a little bit here, and, you know, I get it, it's, it's the rules, it's the code, we want, Lake Mills should have a beautiful industrial park, and I get that. And as long as we're keeping that right balance, keeping the process tight and condensed and open and communicative and, and feedback shared along the way, I mean, you know, I didn't realize I needed every, every drawing that I put together to scale. I mean, I'm not a draft, I didn't know I needed an architect to do this, so it's just one of those things along the way that we can probably tighten it up a little bit. So, that's it. You know, we, we are now the largest dealer in the state, we, I employ 26 people there, we have a second location now as well. This is just one of the things that I want to be doing over the next two years to grow my business. So I'm getting a little concerned, you know, just about how we go about this, you know, and so I have to look at all of my options and, and will continue to do so here. This is just step one, and like I said, I got an accepted offer in June, obviously I'm not going to owes on some property unless I have conditional use approved to operate there, and then understand the economics of those additions in addition to purchasing the property. I know there was some discussions from Ms. Wagner, I believe, about some of the seven-foot-high evergreens, if we have to extend that, I just need to understand the economics of that versus what Brian has in the drawing. So I don't know if that's part of your discussion in approving this or not, but I want to get to a budget that I can feel confident in that there are no surprises, you know? So we got through the Planning Commission and so if there's any other questions through me while I'm here, please, I'd love to hear them.
So any questions? All right, I'm going to move forward with a roll call vote on Resolution 21-53.
Ms. Kurler?
Aye.
Mr. Waters?
Aye.
Mrs. Bishop?
Aye.
Ms. Quidnall?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Motion passed 5-0.
All right, thank you. And good luck with your business, Mr. Oberg. Thank you for locating in our community and growing it to the largest in the, the state, that's, that's pretty neat, so, all right. I'm sorry.
15 under.
Okay, great, thank you. All right, we'll move forward to the next item on the agenda, which is Resolution 21-54. Misty, can you read the title?
Resolution 21-54, Action on Notice of Claiming Claim for Damages Presented by Judy Beck of 539 Norton Street, Lake Mills, Wisconsin.
All right, can I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 21-54 regarding the notice of claim for damages presented by Judy Beck.
A second. All right, motion by Ms. Kurler, second by Mr. Fields. Staff, any comment here? It's probably one for Dan, right?
Yes, I'll let Dan handle this one.
Sure thing. My, online, good to go? Okay. You have received a memo, you received supplementary documents including the insurance provider's recommendation. I believe this claim has been discussed in closed session. I guess I'm more interested in if you have any questions or if there's anything that you'd specifically like to know regarding the claim from me.
Any questions for Mr. Dresser? All right, I know that Mrs. Beck is in the audience today. If we could have a motion to suspend and open the floor to her, see if she has any, anything to say.
I move to suspend the rules so that Ms. Beck has an opportunity to share with us.
Motion by Ms. Quidnall, second by Mr. Fields. All in favor, raise your hand. Berries, right, the floor is open, do you have any comments for Mrs. Beck?
That better? Okay. So I'm here tonight because one of the city's trees did fall on my property, damaged a fence, totaled one of my cars and damaged another car. The insurance for the city has claiming it was a windy day, it was not a windy day, there was no storm, there was a police report. I did contact the city about two years ago and said that the tree was leaning over my property, somebody came, they did cut down some branches, however, the tree was still leaning. I'm non-arborist, so I thought it was fine. And on that note, the tree next to it is also hollow on the inside and I'm guessing it's going to fall soon as well, so hopefully somebody will take care of that as well. But my insurance company is taking care of it at this time, however, I have three claims now on my property because each car is a separate claim, including my house being a separate claim for the fence. This accident that is not my tree and is not my fault is costing me about $3,000 just in deductibles to pay because I have to have three claims and my insurance now has gone up because of this. So I am asking for the city to pay for it, use the insurance with them because it's definitely causing a hardship and there's been enough hardships, I kind of think, already. And being a nurse, I totally understand that things are really rough right now, but I guess this is just, it's causing a lot of issues. So I'm asking for the insurance company to please cover that instead of me having to cover all the deductibles and pay out of pocket so much that, I get it, it's not the city's fault, however, it is also not my fault that the tree fell. So I guess that's really all I have to say about it, if there's any questions for me.
Thank you, Mrs. Beck, are we saying your name right? Beck, is that, okay.
Yes, sir.
Is there any questions for Mrs. Beck? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, any other comment? Seeing none, let's move for a roll call vote.
Mr. Waters?
Aye.
Mrs. Bishop?
Aye.
Ms. Quidnall?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Ms. Kurler?
Aye.
Motion passed 5-0.
All right, thank you. Sorry about that, Ms. Beck. We'll move forward here. Item D on the agenda is Resolution 21-55. Misty, can you read the title?
Resolution number 21-55, Resolution Awarding the Sale of $1,825,000 General Obligation Corporate Purpose Bonds, Series 2021A.
All right, can I have a motion?
I move to accept Resolution number 21-55 with regard to the awarding of the sale of the general obligation corporate purpose bonds of the amount of $1,825,000.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion by Ms. Quidnall, second by Mr. Fields. Get that right in my notes. All right, is there any comment from the staff? John, is John here?
John Cameron should be online.
All right, is he who we'd want to address this?
Yes, yes, he is our advisor for these bonds.
All right, John, the floor is open.
Okay, great, good evening, everybody, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Great. We took bids at 11 o'clock this morning on the 2021A issue, we received three bids with the winning bidder being BOK Financial Securities out of Milwaukee, which is an underwriter that we frequently see bid on many debt offerings across the state. In general, we had a very successful sale. As part of the process, we did go through rating with standard and pores, and I'm very pleased to let you know that the rating, the city's rating of AA minus was affirmed as part of this process, so really thank you to Steve and Betsy for all of their work during this process. There is a fair amount of information gathering that goes into preparing the official statement as well as going through the rating process, so really appreciate all of their efforts. In general, we were able to downsize the issue by $40,000 to the $1,825,000. It does not affect the amount of money that's available for projects or the deposit to the, to the construction fund. We were also able to deposit funds to the debt service fund to help cover the first two years of interest payments, so really fantastic result there. In general, we are a little over $66,000 in terms of the total principal and interest over the life of the bonds, better than what we showed the council last month when I was before you to walk through the pre-sale report. The true interest cost for the bonds is 1.7646%, so really a fantastic sale result and really fantastic results for, for the city. So with that, I will hand it back over and happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, John, is there any questions? Yes, Ms. Kurler?
I have a couple of questions, I don't know if it's for John or, or Betsy or Steve. In the resolution, it talks about early redemption of bonds allowed after, I think it's nine and a half years. Did I understand that correctly? And so basically that means that the city can do an early payoff without penalty?
That's correct. A lot of times we do that if we can get a lower interest rate. Recently, we haven't used it much because it's hard to get lower interest rates, but there are some other reasons why you'd do that.
Okay, and then I, I guess my follow-up question to that is, there was some note in the S and P ratings about the city's relatively high debt burden, but then that being sort of offset in their rating by the rapid amortization of debt, so this is not my wheelhouse, how are we able to achieve paying off debt early? Like, what, what is it about how the city manages our funds that allows us to be able to pay off debt early and is that something that we can sustain?
It has to do more with the schedules that we take, so when we look at the types of purchases we're making, we schedule the debt appropriately, so we don't do it all at 20 years. Some of it's at 10, some of it's at 15 and some of it's at 20. So if you go through and look at the sets of them, we try and get to a schedule that we can pay off as quickly as possible depending on the revenue stream. And then we also look at other items in the, in the process of the debt, so generally we, we've been very successful in being able to manage our debt and keep it in, although it's high, we cover it with multiple other methods and we have a plan to continue to reduce it to a standard that, that's more normal. We, we had a bubble coming out of 2014 that led to several big projects like South Main Street and Mulberry Street and that type of stuff, so we, we knew that we were going to swallow that bubble, you read the reports that I wrote on those, and so those tie together with what S and P watches and how we maintain our unreserved fund balance and work towards controlling our budget, so that all ties together into making sure that they're comfortable with our debt level and giving us a high rating.
Any other questions? All right. Seeing none, let's move to a roll call vote on Resolution 21-55.
Mrs. Bishop?
No.
Ms. Quidnow?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Ms. Curler?
Aye.
Mr. Waters?
Aye.
Motion passed 4-1.
All right, thank you. Item E, Resolution 21-56. Misty, can you read the title?
Resolution number 21-56, a resolution authorizing issuance and sale of $705,000 Suge System and Light and Water Utility Mortgage Revenue Bonds, series 2021B of the City of Lake Mills, Jefferson County, Wisconsin, and providing for the payment of the bonds and other details with respect to the bonds.
All right, can I have a motion?
I move to approve Resolution number 21-56.
Sir, second?
I'll second that.
Motion by Mr. Fields, second by Ms. Curler. Is there a comment from staff?
I think John Cameron can help us with this one again.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, John.
Yep, thank you.
Floor is open.
We, this issue was negotiated with Bankers Bank out of Madison, which is an underwriter that we see frequently as has taken some of the city's debt previously. We had the final pricing with them this morning at approximately 9:00 a.m. As part of the final pricing, we were able to downsize the debt by $10,000 primarily due to a lower underwriter's discount compared to the planning estimate as well as lower overall cost of issuance fees compared to the planning estimate. Interest rates came in really right on top of the planning run. So the true interest cost on this is 2.189%. Really fantastic sale results, again, kind of striking during a very low interest rate environment. So really very pleased with the sale results here.
Thank you, John. Any questions? All right, seeing none, let's move forward with a roll call vote on Resolution 21-56.
Ms. Quidnow?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Ms. Curler?
Aye.
Mr. Waters?
Aye.
Mrs. Bishop?
Aye.
Motion passed 5-0.
Thank you. Item F, Resolution 21-57. Misty, can you read the title on that?
Resolution 21-57, authorization of borrow funds, capital expenditures.
All right, can I have a motion?
I'll move to approve Resolution 21-57.
Second.
Okay, motion by Mr. Fields, second by Ms. Quidnow. Staff, is there any discussion here?
Sure. This is the borrowing that we needed to do for the capital items that were not covered under the bond. And attached to that is a listing of the items that we're financing and also a term sheet giving us the interest rate at 2.5% for 10 years. Have any other questions on this?
I saw that that tied the TID 3 and the TID 5 along with that at the same time.
Right, that term sheet covers all three of those, which will be the next two resolutions.
Okay. Any questions? Yes, Ms. Curler.
Yeah, Betsy, so are you saying these are items that were in the capital improvement plan that we approved previously?
They were in the capital budget. So yes, the capital budget that was approved, you know, November of last year. That's these items that for this year's budget that we're working on.
Okay, so maybe Steve Fields was on that council or... Exactly. So that's why I wanted to clarify. So this is part of this calendar year's capital budget.
Exactly.
And then I guess so then would it be correct that this borrowing would be paid back by tax levy?
Yes, this is under the taxes. That's how the debt is paid, through taxes generally.
Thank you.
Is there any other questions? Yes, Mrs. Bishop?
Have any of these items already been procured, and if so, what funds were used?
Yes, some of these items have already been purchased. Generally, most of them have been purchased, and then we just used the fund balance. And we had passed a resolution early in the year where we're listing the amounts that we anticipate that we will be borrowing and that we will be refunding the general fund through the borrowing.
A follow-up to that, one of these specifically is for $10,000 for PPE. And I'm using that as an example. Is that something we could have spent some of the previous coronavirus funds for? I know I was told previously in a previous meeting we didn't use a lot of those monies.
This isn't that type of PPE.
Okay.
This is fire department protective equipment. So it's heavy jackets, helmets, those self-contained breathing apparatus. So no, they wouldn't have qualified for the coronavirus type of PPE.
I understand. Now, for the CRLF funds, can any of those funds be used for any of these items? I don't know if we did the right letters or acronym, but you talked...
Yeah, you're close enough. It's coronavirus.
Coronavirus, yeah.
Coronavirus, state and local relief funds.
That was like the $300,000 that we got half, or we got the $300,000 and then another $300 to do next year. Can any of those funds be used for these items?
We couldn't go back. And I don't think we could use it for this, but we also couldn't go back.
So we got the $300,000 a few months ago, and we're using $51,000 for the equipment in this room. Am I completely drawing a blank on how we spent the rest of that money?
We haven't spent any.
We haven't spent...
Okay, so could any of those funds be used to reimburse these amounts?
I don't think so, and I don't think this type of PPE would qualify, but we can check.
Okay, and I was using the PPE as an example, but, you know, maybe just cross-referencing those funds with any of these amounts would be helpful, just to make sure we're not taking out more debt than we have to. That's my concern. That's why I'm asking.
We can check.
Okay.
These are borrowed locally through a local bank, so it's not like it's difficult to adjust if we're that case. We would have to come back and have a resolution on the other front.
So I guess I have a follow-up question along those lines. If we would table this till next time so that you could provide us a little more information about any of these, you know, does that cause any problems with what Greenwood's Bank is offering?
I don't think it will. I don't think it should.
I guess I had a similar question about whether any of these were eligible for those funds. And no, I'm not sure if everyone on the council would agree that that funding source is appropriate, but certainly we've got, after the earlier approval tonight, we've got $575,000 still that is available from those recovery funds. So it might be helpful to know if any of those could be used for this.
I know...
Yes.
I know the other thing we had talked about is, we threw out ideas about how we could potentially use this money down the road. So if we try and go back and grab some of these items that have already been approved in a past budget, we're not necessarily offsetting anything that's going to be hitting us next year or the following year. So it's kind of a little bit of a shell game that, you know, with interest rates potentially going up next year, we'd be better off taking this and potentially doing a little bit more of a strategic planning with what to do with the rest of the money. We'll use it appropriately.
Any other comments? Mrs. Bishop?
Ms. Melbrough, you said some of these were already paid. Do you have a list of which ones have already been paid and which bills are outstanding?
No, I did not make a list, so I can't tell you specifically. But I do know many of these items have already had expenses, like the backhoe and the squad car. You know, I could go through and just itemize the ones I specifically know. But, you know, we're talking throughout the year. Some of these, you know, like the compost design and the mill pond studies, might have a little bit here and there throughout the year that have been purchased against that. And of course, when we do receive the funding, then I gather up all of the invoices and make an accounting of what's already been expended. And then I withdraw those funds from the borrowed money and replenish the general fund.
My concern again goes back, to use Mr. Fields's words about our shell game. We've already paid for a lot of this, and now we're taking out debt again on the back end when we just passed, you know, nearly $2.5 million in debt and bonds. So I just wonder when we're going to start paying down debt, and that will be my continued concern for all of these resolutions and the spending that we're looking at doing.
I really appreciate you continuing that conversation with us, Mrs. Bishop. And I think that, I guess I'm a little bit persuaded by Mr. Fields's comments that this was a commitment that a prior council made, a plan that was approved and set in motion. And so I feel a certain obligation to honor that. But yet, I think we should have some serious conversations in our upcoming budget discussion about how do we now minimize the borrowing that we need to do, especially against the tax levy, so that we can continue the good work of our, in our community without having a lot of debt.
Yes, Ms. Quidnow?
Ms. Melbrough, is this common, is this an every-year kind of thing? Or is this something that's specifically bigger because of the last couple of years?
You're talking about the level of the borrowing for this entire year. Borrowing is going to be based on the projects that are specifically needed. And as Steve had pointed out, there were years when they were quite expensive. We had to do South Main Street and Mulberry Street, and this was the directives that come. Or there are situations that require us to need items, and so they're placed in the budget. And then the borrowing has to happen in order to be able to afford them. You know, Steve is working in the budget, and he has to stay within the constraints of expenditure restraint and levy limits and try to make all of that work. And too many times, the borrowing is the mechanism that allows us to move forward. And he is very conscious of trying to keep the borrowing as low as possible and still to perform and have all of these projects be successful and keep the city in the level that we as citizens have come to expect and appreciate. So this is, it is difficult.
Sure. I just want to make sure I put this in layman's terms for myself because sometimes I get a little confused by things. So in other words, we've created this budget, and some unexpected things have come up in the process of doing the activity. No, okay, Steve is shaking his head. No.
That's not, that's not the situation here.
Thank you, that's why I clarified with layman's terms. Help me understand.
Yeah, no. This is pretty typical. It's actually a little bit lower than what we've done in the last...
That's what I was looking for.
...five years. 2014, we took a significant jump. Went up for about five years. This is actually going down. We took one year off. And when I say that, I think '19, we had the lowest that we've had in a while. This year is a little bit higher than that, but it's lower than what we did in like '15, '16, '17, '18. And we did that with plan and design, and we knew where we were at. And we had an idea of what we were trying to accomplish. The debt comes off at the rate it's going off. There's no, there's no relationship between expenditure restraint and levy cap and debt. You have to pay your debt, and it's levied. So the, we haven't had any problem maintaining our payments at all. That's not an issue in Wisconsin. The issue would be if your tax rate gets extremely out of hand. If we were taxing at 12 or 10 or 12 mils, then you might say, okay, you're out of line. But we're nowhere near that. In fact, we're going down again this year. So it's... The overall debt, every city, and if you looked at the one public policy study, every city in the state has debt, continues to issue debt every year, and has an idea of how their schedule is going. The debt actually across state has been going up, and we've actually been coming down. So it's a little bit of a, we bid ours a little bit earlier, and now we're coming down. Although at some point in time, I'm sure we'll jump. But if, watch the Public Works Report. Forty-five percent of all the new water main in the city was constructed in the last 30 years. Forty percent of the water main is 50 years old or older, and a lot of it is in the 90 to 100-year category. So there's, there was a long gap of maintaining it. So at some point, you've got to bite the bullet and jump and get it done, and that's what we've been doing. We're hoping that we get over it, but you tend to have those as you move through the debt process, some ups and some downs. We try and make it so that we schedule it out. The main goal that all the councils I've worked for here was to keep that tax rate as flat as possible.
Do you have a follow-up?
Yes, I did. But I want to make sure I understand correctly. You're telling me that despite the debt that we are presented with here, the taxes will not go up? Do you cover it?
They will go up a little.
You need to go put your mic on again.
They'll go up a little. They'll go up $30 on $265,000 at home. Or $236,000 at home.
Yeah, I was reading that it was like $36 some odd cents or something like that.
I think it was $30.
Okay, sorry. I think the question I was having was with regard to the pattern. If this is a pattern, and if there's something that we can do to help with decreasing the possibility of this reoccurring, especially with this council, since we're new and we have probably some new ideas, and maybe we're naive, who knows? But the idea is that maybe we can do some things to help prepare so that this kind of thing doesn't happen, if that's at all possible. Your mic is off again.
I was turning it on. The, it is a pattern. It's becoming more typical across the state of Wisconsin. The typical method that you use to reduce the amount of debt was to create a capital improvement fund. When I got here, that was the first thing I looked at. We already were under levies. And the ability to raise the operating fund enough to transfer funds from the general fund into an operating fund was not available. So the other option is still issue debt, but instead of using a tax levy, you do special assessments. Special assessments are a fee or a charge levied against the benefit of property. So historically, what we do is we levy across everybody. Nobody specifically gets that fee or charge. So let's say this year, if we had done Westlake Street as we've done, we would bill everybody a certain amount of money on that street for that work, and then we would give them five to 10 years to pay that off. And then we would use that to pay the... the debt we issued. Those are typically the normal processes for rolling debt. The other one is not doing anything, and you don't borrow any money.
Okay, thank you.
Seeing no questions, let's move forward with a roll call on Resolution 21-57.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Ms. Curler?
Aye.
Mr. Waters?
Aye.
Mrs. Bishop?
No.
Ms. Quidnow?
No.
Motion passed 3 to 2.
All right, thank you. Item G, Resolution 21-58. Misty, can you read that title?
Resolution 21-58, Authorization to Borrow Funds, TID number 3.
All right, can we have a motion?
Make a motion to approve Resolution 21-58 regarding authorization to borrow funds from TID number 3.
I'll second.
All right, motion by Ms. Curler, second by Mr. Fields. Staff, any, I know that we just went through a lot of that explanation. Is there anything else to add to this?
The only difference here is that this is specifically for Jefferson Street redevelopment, and that is in the TID. So the TID is going to be out of the increment paying for this debt.
Is there any questions? Seeing no questions, let's move, yes.
Is this correct, similar to the last one, that this is part of the plan in the 2021 budget?
Yes, it was in the budget.
Okay.
It's also part of a developer's agreement.
Not Jefferson Street.
Yeah, that's right.
Any other questions? All right, seeing none, let's move forward with a roll call on Resolution 21-58.
Ms. Curler?
Aye.
Mr. Waters?
Aye.
Mrs. Bishop?
No.
Ms. Quidnow?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Motion passed 4 to 1.
All right, thank you. Moving forward with Resolution 21-59. Misty, can you read that title?
Resolution 21-59, Authorization to Borrow Funds, TID number 5.
All right, can we have a motion?
I move to accept Resolution 21-59, the authorization to borrow funds from TID 5.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Still motion by Ms. Quidnow, second by Ms. Curler. Discussion, we just kind of went over it, but there's something specific here, right? It's not Jefferson Street, but it is TID 5?
Right, that's correct, and there is a developer's agreement associated with this. There are certain milestones that need to be met, and at those milestones, there in the developer's agreement, it is specifically saying the city will assist with this development at each of these milestones, which is why instead of just a, here is, you know, a money that is going to be given from the bank, all in one lump sum, I discussed with them that the, none of the milestones had been met yet, and so I wanted to not just receive all of the money right away and have to, you know, pay interest on money that we didn't need yet. So that's why this one is a non-revolving line of credit for $300,000.
Is there any questions? All right.
I guess I'm not seeing where it's a non-revolving line of credit. I see it as a promissory note?
Yeah, it's in the term sheet.
Oh, back on the prior item?
Right, that where they listed all three of the items.
Okay, okay, thank you.
With regard to this.
I just saw that as promissory note, so that's why I wasn't sure.
Any other comments? All right, seeing none, let's do a roll call vote on Resolution 21-59.
Mr. Waters?
Aye.
Mrs. Bishop?
No.
Ms. Quidnow?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Ms. Curler?
Aye.
Motion passed 4 to, I'm sorry, 4 to 1.
All right, thank you. Moving on to item I, Resolution 21-60. Misty, can you read the title on that?
City of Lake Mills, Resolution 21-60, Resolution approving updates to the roadway functional classifications for the City of Lake Mills.
All right, can we have a motion?
Make a motion to approve Resolution 21-60 regarding updates to the city's roadway functional classifications.
Second.
All right, motion by Ms. Curler, second by Ms. Quidnow. Staff, is there some comment on this?
Yeah, we began work on a surface transportation grant, and one of the items that we noticed was is that our functional classifications in the CP Owen Street area was not what we thought it should be. So we contacted the state and asked them to review it. They called us back and said, hey, this is the time to do it, and then they talked to us and said, yeah, we agree with you. We think that's appropriate. They submitted this map, that pass this resolution, and we'll upgrade it. That makes this whole project that we want to do grant-eligible, and so we felt it was a good move. I don't know that we'll qualify for this grant, because we, the way they do it is you start at zero, and then you kind of work up, and then once you get a grant, you go to negative, and Mulberry Street was our negative. But there's quite a bit of money available apparently this year, and maybe not a lot of people quite applying yet, so we thought, hey, let's get a project in. And so we asked them to do this for us, and this is what they told us we need to do.
Is there any comment? Questions, I should say? Questions or comments? Yes, Ms. Bishop?
Mr. Wilkie, can you tell us more about the project you're referencing that this grant would be appropriate for?
Collector streets are always what they're looking at. Collectors are higher. So what we're looking at is a project in the Owen CP area. It would run from Lake Street up CP Avenue to Owen Street there by Crystal Farms, and then would turn and head up by the Tyranina Brewery to County Highway V, and probably the main, it would convert it from, that's all, most of that is what we call rural cross-section, and we would convert it to an urban cross-section. So it would have curb and gutter, or water piping instead of ditches, sidewalks, and then instead of having that three-way intersection, it would be a curve. And that's in the transportation plan, so you can review that, and it'll give you all the diagrams and documents.
Any other questions or comment? Yes, Mrs. Curler.
Steve, a couple of questions. One, just on the spreadsheet, what does the acronym ADT stand for? That was one of the reasons for a lot of these changes?
Average Daily Traffic.
Okay, that was what I was kind of curious about, is if there was some traffic element as part of the criteria, okay? And then I guess another question I had is, it looks like Sandy Beach Road is being proposed to be upgraded to a collector, and I'm just curious about how that qualifies, because obviously that goes down to the beach and then it ends there.
I'm not totally sure, other than ADT. And that's a debate we had when we had this conversation, but Sandy Beach Road was done about 22 years ago, probably coming up for an upgrade. One of the big issues on Sandy Beach Road is additional right-of-way acquisition, because it's an unusually narrow right-of-way, and so in order to make it qualify as regular street, there's a lot of money involved in that. So we were hoping that a grant would be available for that, and technically Sandy Beach Road has been part of the collector system now for at least 20 years. We didn't make that change. We debated changing it, but we didn't make the change, because we thought maybe it might be worthwhile being able to upgrade that roadway.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, Ms. Bishop?
Two things, if I may. I just had to look up the term collector roads, because I didn't know, so I want to put the definition out there and see if that's correct. It's the second most common type of road. They're used in connection between local roads and arterial roads. Is that what that means?
Yes.
Okay, and then my second question is, looking at the Lake Mills UA change list, are all of these changes required in order to meet the grant requirements, or could we go through and look at different roads, like because Sandy Beach Road is a dead end to Ms. Curler's point, so are there roads that we could take out if we didn't think they needed to be changed or upgraded?
Yeah, that's a good question, and we debated that ourselves. We feel that this is a good option for us right now. But if you wanted to change it in the future, you can file. So let's say you decided that Sandy Beach Road wasn't the one you wanted. You could just file and say, hey, we would prefer to have a different street. You have to submit a document to the state saying we want to change our collectors.
And is that just a resolution from the council, and what cost is associated with that?
It's not a cost, but it's a, you have to wait for the state to do the ADTs.
So are you saying that these recommended updates are coming from the state? Like, this is what, how the state has evaluated them?
Yes, this is a combination of the existing collectors, so like Sandy Beach Road was an existing collector. We, the area here that we're talking about on CP actually went up to Stony Road, and then turned and went up Stony Road to Topeka, and then out Topeka, but traffic doesn't flow like that. And those, Topeka isn't a collector, Stony is, but Topeka is not. So the most logical route for this collector system was up that route. Grant Street was listed as one. We took Grant Street out. Portions of Ferry, where the street gets really narrow, were part of the collector. We felt that wasn't a necessary route. We added CP Avenue South and American Way and Brookstone. But yeah, we debated, we wanted to get this one done now, so that we can get in on the grant process, but if we have to, we can go back and redo it. In the worst-case scenario, we can have the county give us their counters, and we can do the counting ourself, and we file.
Ms. Quidnow?
Steve, knowing the area of American Parkway and how we are intending on it leading all the way to Harvey Road, would this be the opportune time to consider just plowing through and getting that done, as well as putting the things in to make it a collector's road, so that it's kind of covering all the bases in one lump sum, or is that something we have to do to an existing road? And since there isn't a road leading all the way out to Harvey from American, that that would have to take place first?
Well, we don't generally push the roads through. We allow the developers to do that. So like, when we've been doing Brookstone phases, we've been special assessing all that, based on an agreement with the developer. So we generally don't push a road through until there's some type of development agreement. As it currently lays out, that road should be through in about three to five years, based on the agreement. That's why we had this conversation with that. They were really comfortable in running it from CP to Brookstone and up, knowing that in the future, we may add on American Way all the way out to Harvey. But either way, both of them are major collectors in the city, and would be worthy of that. West Park Place, Sandy Beach Road, but right now, you get a certain amount of miles, and you don't want to give them up. So you keep them on. Once you get to the point where you're comfortable and make a change, you file with them by resolution, ask for the data, and move forward.
Ms. Bishop?
Final thing. This seems to come out every 10 years to coincide with the census data, but I haven't seen census data yet, and could we anticipate that these estimates and recommendations would change when the census data does come out?
Our census data says that we grew to, what, 2211 or something like that? Yeah, and so while it's second largest in the county, it's not huge, and it wouldn't make a substantial difference. We have real good data on what kind of traffic routes are being used in the city, and this coincides with that pretty well. There are a few oddballs out there, but even Sandy Beach Road is, if you took summertime data, it's huge.
Did you say 2211?
Yes. No, 6211.
6211, okay. Any other questions? All right, seeing none. Let's do a roll call on Resolution 21-60.
Mrs. Bishop?
Aye.
Ms. Quidnow?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Ms. Curler?
Aye.
Mr. Waters?
Aye.
Motion passed 5 to 1.
All right. So that wraps up our council business. Is there any recommendations for future agenda items? Do you have something, Steve?
Well, we're going to need to do study sessions, and I imagine you may want to come in and do some work on getting into the budget.
So study sessions and some education on how to educate the budget, or how to navigate the budget, so. So everyone's on their own there. They have to make an appointment with Steve and come in for that?
Yeah, who's the instructor for clear.gov? That's you, Steve, or Betsy, or?
No, I get it started, but basically, there are a lot of webinars on there that you, that'll get you through it pretty well. Even for me, you know, once I'm done in November, it's, you don't look at it again until March, and I had to go back to the webinar and have it teach me how to do it again. And they change it just enough every year that people, even staff, have problems navigating.
Is there any other suggestions? Yes.
I don't recommend doing it until after the budget cycle, but I have received feedback from my plan commission members that they don't know us as council members, and I'm wondering if other commissions and committees don't have the same concerns. So maybe after the budget cycle before Christmas, we could have a work-study session and bring those people in, like we did city staff, and meet them, and, you know, find out maybe some of their concerns. So that's just a recommendation I have for in the future.
Great idea. Thank you.
I think we've also talked to the school district about having a joint meeting.
Not to get political, but I think they're pretty busy right now.
Yeah, I noticed that. They haven't been calling yet off.
With respect to the studies, yeah, special sessions, how do you want to schedule those? You know, send out possible dates by email, or, okay, because it'd be nice to get on the calendar.
I'll have Misty start working on that.
All right.
Can I recommend just a thing that I have to do with my own meetings for my other job? Using a Doodle poll, which is an opportunity for you to set dates. And then people can log in and select which dates work best for them. It's a real nice concise way to gather data on meetings, instead of several emails.
All right, you can talk to Steve about that.
I'll instruct you and Misty on how to do that.
County Administrator Waitmeyer uses that all the time. I'm already signed up for it.
Perfect.
All right, any other comments here on future agenda items? All right. So in a second here, I'm going to ask for a motion to move into closed session. After that closed session, we will not come back to the TV to close out the meeting at the end. But we will do it offline, just so everyone's clear on that. Is there a motion to move to closed session? Or do I need to read this? Invade into closed session pursuant to 19.85, Section 1E, deliberating or negotiating the purchase of public property, investing of public funds, or conducting other specific public business whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session? Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion that we convene into closed session pursuant to 19.851E, as stated in the agenda. Second.
All right, motion by Ms. Curler, second by Mrs. Bishop. Any discussion? Let's just do a raise on favor. Raise your hand. Carried 5 to 0. We're moving into closed session. Thank you.